Yes, ma'am.
Call the meeting to order. Welcome to April 11th, 2022, Meeting of Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, a member at large and chairman of the board. At this time, I'd like our other members to introduce themselves.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Steve Hall, Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Doc Cherry, at-large member.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Brent Moore, Crowthers Mountain Township.
On behalf of the board, oh, I'm sorry. Robbie?
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
And I hope you're feeling better, Robbie.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon, and thank you for supporting Gaston County Schools. We are having a regular meeting a little early this month due to the spring break, which I am sure everyone is looking forward to next week. Our first order of business is have our prayer and pledge allegiance, and I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for everyone gathered here now. We thank you that you know each of us by name and have called us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust is in you completely. Come fill our lives with your love, fill our conversations with your grace and truth, and fill this meeting with your presence. We ask all this in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Our next order of business is adopt the agenda you have proposed, the agenda before you. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Moore, motion second. Ms. Cherry, any discussion? All in favor? The agenda is adopted. Uh, Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
Yeah. Doc Guthrie reminded me. Our next order of business to hear good news happening in our school. Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board would like to start off by talking about the Gazette Spelling Bee. We were very fortunate to have two of our students finish first and second. Belmont Middle School student Rex Dover was the winner of the Spelling Bee, and Paulo Sexton of York Chester finished in second place. Rex Dover will represent us at Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC, and we're extremely proud of both these two students, but all who represented their respective schools at the Spelling Bee, and we appreciate the Gazette's ongoing sponsorship of this program. Next, it's exciting to recognize Alan Chin. He is a student at Gaston Early College, and he earned a perfect score on the math portion of the SAT. And we wanted to just pause and congratulate Alan on this achievement, and we know that Early College is very proud of his achievement. And next, we've got our Do the Right Thing winners, and these are the winners for the month of April. Jace Leinberger of Page Elementary, Zaden Miller of Brookside Elementary, Alexandria Price of Southwest Middle, and Sidney Crane of North Gaston High School. This is another program we do in partnership with the Gazette to recognize our students for outstanding character and kindness and for doing the right thing. This is our final group of Do the Right Thing winners for this school year, and we look forward to honoring all the winners on Tuesday, May 17th, with a special recognition during the Gaston Honey Hunters baseball game. Now you have three individuals in front of you who are part of the Gaston County Museum of Art and Histories through an Artist's Eyes exhibit. The works are on display through May 21st at the Gaston Museum, and they feature work in 12 different categories. And this evening, it's our pleasure to recognize these three students from Hunter Huss Senior, Rhiannon Woolworth, Woolmoth, excuse me, who earned the Best in Show recognition for her award-winning piece titled Arizona. Southwest Middle School student Trinity Ledford received the James C. Biggers Award for her piece titled Kaleidoscope. And then for the Director's Choice Award, Ashbrook High School student Erin Potteet for her painting titled Bowie. Want to congratulate all the students who are participating in the Gaston County Art Show, and we want to thank our teachers for their commitment to the arts and supporting our students. Several weeks ago, we had the opportunity to partner with Dominion Energy as they recognized four outstanding female teachers in the area of career and technical education. As part of Women's History Month, Julie Roper, the representative with Dominion Energy, who does many things with our schools, presented a $500 grant to each teacher, which will be used to enhance their career and technical education lessons and activities. The four teachers recognized by Dominion Energy were Anna Guzakis of Ashbrook High School, Holly Height of Camer- Cramerton Middle School, Jill Lennox of East Gaston High School, and Angela Sanders of Southwest Middle School. And it was a pleasure to have them here in the boardroom when they received the grants and some of their family with them. Just want to thank these teachers for the outstanding work they do and really appreciate Dominion Energy for its willingness to recognize these educators and support our schools. Next, we'll recognize our own Athletic Director for Gaston County Schools, Mr. Chad Duncan. He received the State Award of Merit from the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. This award is given to one administrator in each of the 50 states for their service and dedication to high school and middle school athletics. This is a great honor, and it recognizes Mr. Duncan's leadership, not only in Gaston County, but throughout the state of North Carolina. Additionally, at the meeting of our North Carolina Athletic Directors Association, Mr. Duncan was elected to serve as president, and we're proud to have someone leading the statewide organization from Gaston County. Also, while the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association was meeting, two of our high school athletic directors received one a Citation Award and the other an Award of Excellence. These are given to athletic directors who've had a significant impact on sports at their school, conference, or in the region over the past year. The award recipients are Elliot Bridges from Hunter Huss High School, who received a Citation Award, and Kent Hyde from South Point High School, who received the Award of Excellence. We want to thank both of these gentlemen for their service and the recognition by the statewide organization all they do for their school's athletic programs. Mr. Chair, that is the good news for tonight.
Thank you for sharing all the good news. The next item on the agenda allow the opportunity for public expression. We do have several individuals who have signed up prior to our beginning of this meeting. Our board policy sets the first 30 minutes of our regular monthly meeting for citizens to address the board. Before we hear from the public, let me outline the rules of procedures. Citizens wishing to make a comment and who made a complete Request to Speak form prior to the beginning of the meeting will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone to make their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the board do not respond to public expressions during the public comment period. Public expressions do not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the board will hand them to the clerk. The chair shall rule at all points of order during public expression. Our first speaker is Dana Frady, Sydney Scruggs Johnson, Lauren Frady, Benjamin Connor, Haley Brazil, Pamela Miller.
Good evening. My name is Pam Miller. I live in Cramerton. I'm a proud teacher in Gaston County Schools, and I'm honored to be president of Gaston NCAE. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of my members about the lack of educator voice in our school system. Many times in the last few years especially, educators have not been asked about how things should be in their schools, how best to meet the needs of students during these difficult times, or even how we are mentally, emotionally, and physically. We are expected to carry out plans that we have had no voice in creating. We keep saying that we feel undervalued, underappreciated, and we all know we are underpaid. Time and again, we put student needs and safety first because that is our calling, but our tanks are running low. Just like many other workforces across the country, there have been numerous educators that have left their teaching positions simply because they cannot take the stress and strain anymore. They cannot provide for their families financially. They cannot continue to work well over 40 hours a week. This must change if Gaston County Schools is going to be a place where we provide innovative educational opportunities for all students in a safe and nurturing environment. While Dr. Booker and his administrative team are faithful to meet with the Gaston NCAE officers monthly to answer our questions and listen to our concerns, more conversations are needed to improve working and learning conditions in our county. Educators from all across the county, all job positions, and all walks of life need to be consulted on how best to close the learning gap created by the pandemic. We need to be consulted on how best to spend the extra funds that remain from the American Recovery Act. In other words, educators need to be involved in how things are done in Gaston County Schools, the same way that we are expected to involve our students in creating a classroom climate. Student voice has become very important in the classroom, and it has been a change for the better. Student voice leads to student ownership of their learning and education. Educator voice will create more positive and cohesive, a more positive and cohesive workforce across the county, which can only benefit our students and our future. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you for what you do for Gaston County Schools. Robert Walls.
Hello. First, I would like to say I'd like to thank Dr. Booker, Superintendent, Board members, and Gaston County staff for allowing me the opportunity today. My name is Robert Walls. I live at 415 Chapman Point Circle in Dallas, North Carolina, the chief of police in the town of Dallas, and also serve on the Leader and Me Advisory Group for Gaston County Schools. What I want to bring to your attention today is something that's alarming a little bit, is the tardies in our school system, and I've observed as the SRO working periodically. Mr. Dedman, last month, you asked a question regarding all the online programs being used in our school. I'm completely supportive of that. Nothing replaces a good teacher. But as an officer working in the school system, as an off-duty resource officer, at times, I see a huge reason that so many teachers are having to depend on these programs that were discussed at the last meeting, and that is due to the attendance. During my time working off-duty in the school system, I'm constantly letting kids in late that is causing a constant interruption to a teacher's day and the learning opportunity of the other students in class. Would it surprise you if I give you a couple of numbers? 3,671 tardies in one school, and that's an elementary school up to this day of the year, 6,661 tardies in another school, and that's going to be from a high school in our county, just one high school. If this number isn't surprising or alarming enough, how about these numbers? We have 14,032 unexcused absences in a high school in our county. Again, that number doesn't include the excused days that were there. With allowing the students the never-ending opportunity to make up missed assignments due to poor attendance, teachers rely heavily on these programs that the county is paying for. Again, nothing replaces the learning environment of a live teacher, but there isn't a teacher that could provide reteach for the 14,032 unexcused absences alone. Please also note, the numbers that you have heard today does not include the times the teacher has to stop, stop class, or the students are interrupted for sign-outs, which those numbers are even more alarming. Once a student reaches their required three and a half hours a day, they're checked out, and I've seen that firsthand a lot. Less required than a school day is actually that, an entire school day, and create an attendance tardy policies which doesn't punish the teachers, but instead hold the parents and the families accountable for missed learning time. As far as the students in the higher grade levels coming in tardy and not getting checked in or wanted, I've seen it firsthand, and it does not happen. You come into school late, you can walk right in the door, and you're never even scanned, and that to me is a safety concern, but that's a whole different. So, but what I'd like to say in closing, I'd like to say it's our goal and objective to prepare these students to be productive members of society and to eventually join our workforce. If we don't start holding our parents and the students accountable and responsible for their actions, like I briefly mentioned today, then I think we're all doing a disservice to them. Thank you all, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Willis.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, Dr. Booker, and board members. My name is Sherri Willis. I live in Belmont. I have been a proud Gaston County Schools teacher for 19 years. Don't tell anybody. And I'm honored to be the Secretary of Gaston NCAE. Way back in 2003, when I attended the Outstanding Tips Program for new teachers in Gaston County Schools, I was given the book, The First Days of School by Harry Wong. Remember this one? Yeah, you remember that one, yeah. It is a renowned step-by-step on how to be an effective teacher. I still read over it before school starts each year. It states on page one, "The single greatest effect on student achievement is not race, not poverty, but the effectiveness of the teacher." Now, I would be the first to tell you that there is not one educator in all of North Carolina who would be effective without support staff, school nutrition, custodians, administration, families, community. So how can all of these people work together to be effective educators for all children? Each of these people need to be able to contribute ideas for what they see every day that could impact a child. When we asked, they had several replies. Building repairs and additions, payment for covering classes, increase in hourly staff pay, classroom resources such as new technology, textbook supplies, pay increase in bonuses for current employees, signing bonuses for hourly staff and substitutes. It may sound like this is all a way of saying, "Give us money," and it kind of is. But the plea is that we are involved in how and where the money is spent. Each school has different needs. Most schools need more people right now. But we've needed more people for almost two decades since I've been here. Every year, they have been cut and cut and cut, and I can see that much of this comes from the state level. But wouldn't it be great if the state DPI asked you what you thought was best for Gaston County Schools instead of just saying, "Here's what you get: do more with less," again this year? This is not a COVID problem. It is a COVID reveal of the problem. The advantage at this stage is that we actually have to access, we actually have access to real funding that we can allocate as we see fit. Please don't let this opportunity to shape the future of GCS go by without those of every tiny little educating a child.
Thank you, Ms. Willis, and thank you for all y'all's comments. The next item on the agenda is approval and correction of minutes, and this is an action item for the minutes for March 21st. Do I have a motion? Mr. Hall makes a motion. Second, Mr. Moore, any discussion? All in favor? Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda allow for a report from our Superintendent COVID-19 Update.
Thank you, members of the board. We are loading a PowerPoint presentation. Just want to show you the data that we have been showing you since October. It will not surprise any of you that we have continued to see a decline in overall COVID cases, but I will say as we have had some events, that larger groups coming together, we have seen, we have one cluster at a school and another two potential clusters in schools. And this, remember, a cluster is defined as where five cases can be attributed to the same source, and we have had one of those in the last week. So we will continue to work on COVID-19 update. We have our testing sites are still open at each of the schools, and they will be open until June 3rd, so all the way through the conclusion of school, so they'll be still functioning June 3rd. And one of the things in working with the Health Department that we all know, there's a number of home tests available now, and a lot of folks self-test and then stay out, so some of the data doesn't reflect. But our positivity rate in a county remains in the 2% to 3% area. So that is the COVID update for this week.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. The next item is one that's been on the agenda every regular meeting this school year. By current North Carolina law, all local boards of education shall vote on a face covering policy every month, either maintain the current policy or amend it. Our current policy that masks are optional in Gaston County public schools by all students, staff, visitors, and all campus. Do I hear a motion to proceed? Mr. Moore? Make a motion to keep the mask.
I'll second.
All right, second, Mr. Collier, any discussions?
Keep masks optional.
Sorry. I just want to make sure y'all's paying attention. All in favor? Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. She's sustained, Ms. Guthrie did. Okay, next item on the agenda is one of our favorites, Teacher Appreciation Week Proclamation. This is an action item, and Todd Hagens is going to present.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. I have two proclamations to present to the board this evening. The first one is for Teacher Appreciation Week, and that proclamation reads, "Whereas Gaston County Schools is pleased to join school districts across the United States in celebrating May the 2nd through the 6th as Teacher Appreciation Week and promoting the 'Teaching is Hard Work' theme. And whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is one of the most important annual observances in education because it brings attention to the teaching profession, which is worthy of honor and praise. And whereas every day in Gaston County Schools, our teachers give their heart and soul to a profession they love, and despite the pandemic and other challenges, they remain steadfast in their commitment to help all children reach their full potential and experience success. And whereas while times have been tough, our teachers have proven they are tougher as they continue to go beyond expectations to support students and families and provide a school learning environment that is welcoming, safe, nurturing, and meaningful. And whereas our teachers in Gaston County Schools wholeheartedly embrace the responsibility of ensuring that children learn the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful in life beyond graduation, thus preparing them to become contributing members of our community. Now therefore be it resolved to honor all teachers for their important contributions to our schools and outstanding efforts to positively influence the leaders of tomorrow. The Board of Education is proud to claim the week of May the 2nd through 6th, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Gaston County Schools, and encourages students, parents, alumni, and others in our community to express their appreciation for teachers. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes that the Board of Education adopted this the 11th day of April, 2022. And Mr. Chairman, this proclamation is before the board for consideration and approval."
Yes, and this is an action item. Ms. Guthrie? All right, and second, Mr. Dedman? Any comments or discussion we'd like to share?
Mr. Chair, I would like for all of the teachers that are in this room right now to come stand next to where Mr. Todd is, please, because this represents you. We don't get this opportunity very often to say thank you for the work that you do, and truly, you do pour your hearts and souls into what you do. And truly, you do pour your hearts and souls into what you do each and every day in the classroom. You do take Little Johnny as he arrives in school, and you try to find the diamond in the rough. You do use the resources that you have, and you maximize them to the best of your ability. You do worry about how you're going to measure the growth of every child during a day or at the end of a grading period. You do come when you know you're not feeling well and that there are shortages within your school. You do pour your hearts and souls into that. And for that, we want to say to you, we thank you. We greatly appreciate you. And just using a few words from an unknown poet, since April is National Poetry Month, I want to use these words, and I quote, "There's a confident thought at the close of the day when I'm lonely, weary, and sad. It gets into my soul, and it drives out the blues." That's what you do, teachers, and we greatly appreciate you. I stand with you because I know how difficult it has been for you, yet you persevered. We thank you. And I accept the proclamation along with you. Thank you. If memory serves me correctly, Mr. Chair, may I get up and go down?
Yes, ma'am.
I know what's going to happen now.
You might as well step aside, Todd.
You want me to go and call for it? Let's call for the vote, and then you can...
Yeah. All in favor? Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
All right. That's unanimous. All right, Ms. Guthrie?
I'm just going to wait for him to read.
Oh, on the other.
I can do that. I like to read.
Before you get started on that, on behalf of the school board, we know y'all went beyond the calling to being a teacher in the last two years. I've seen a little bit firsthand, my wife's learning how to do computers. So that's the learning curve of everything we had to do, especially all y'all and our staff, has been unbelievable. And I can tell you one thing, the state of North Carolina's been watching Gaston County do the best work through the COVID. That's why they've watched us and measured us more than anyone in the county, because we was able to stay open more than anyone else in the top 10 in the county. But thank you again. Todd, oh, sorry, Dot wants to talk. The other Dot wants to talk.
I do. I think Pam and Sherry both said it very well. None of us would be here without y'all. None of the support staff would be here without our teachers. And we do know that. I know we don't tell you thank you enough. But from the bottom of my heart, and I think I speak for everybody else, thank you. I couldn't do what y'all do every day. But you are admired, you are appreciated, and you are loved. And I know sometimes it doesn't feel like that. I don't feel like that all the time. It's been a tough two years. I know that. And God bless y'all for persevering like y'all do every single day. Again, we don't tell you enough, and we don't show you enough, but you are admired and appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Dot. Anyone else who we know will go to Dot Hagens again, and one of Ms. Guthrie's favorite ones, National School Library Month proclamation.
Mr. Ramsey, before I read the proclamation, we do want to let you know that the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation coincides with Teacher Appreciation Week the first week of May, when we celebrate National Teacher Day, and also our Evening of Excellence Ceremony, which the highlight of that ceremony is announcing our Gaston County Teacher of the Year. So now we have the proclamation for National School Library Month. Whereas for the 37th consecutive year, the month of April is designated National School Library Month in an effort to celebrate school libraries and bring attention to the important role that school libraries play in public education. And whereas the library media center serves as the heart of a school and provides valuable materials and resources for students and teachers, and everything that the library media center has to offer enhances a school's overall academic program. And whereas the school libraries in Gaston County Schools offer books, technology, and many other tools that connect students with information, give teachers what they need to encourage discovery, and foster an engaging and collaborative learning environment. And whereas we are extremely proud of the school librarians and media center coordinators in Gaston County Schools who work diligently to make the library a fun, inviting, and special place for reading, knowledge, understanding, and personal growth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education is pleased to join other boards of education across the United States in proclaiming April 2022 as National School Library Month, and encourages the citizens of Gaston County to join in the celebration of National School Library Month by thanking our school librarians and media center coordinators for their efforts to promote the importance of libraries and stressing the significance of libraries in our schools and in our communities. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes that the Board of Education adopted this the 11th day of April 2022. And this proclamation is before the board for consideration and approval.
Ms. Guthrie?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the proclamation that has been presented before us.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cherry, second. Any discussion or comment?
I would like to recognize Linda Cathcart, who's here. And she is this year's School Library Media Coordinator of... And when you talk about going above and beyond the duty, she opened up a new middle school media center this year. So thank you for all that work and planning that went into that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
I would like for the librarians or media specialists to come forward. And while they're coming, I want to say to Pepe Jones, a colleague of mine for many, many years, an exemplary librarian, one who takes the time to search resources to make certain that quality books are ordered, catalogued, and placed into the right hand of the right reader at the right time.
We try.
Librarians, we appreciate you assessing your collections, looking at your Dewey Decimal System, making certain that your science, your technology, your social sciences are current while you leave your classics for the children to learn from. We appreciate you. Some may say that I'm taking too much time, but we need to take this time. You have shown us for two years that you have done whatever was needed to make certain that our children received the correct resources, and our teachers had resources to suggest to our reluctant readers as well as our gifted readers. So we want you to know that again, I am accepting the proclamation along with you because we read to learn, and we learn to read. And we thank you very much.
So that said, I'd like to see who's all in favor. Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. The next item is Department of Exceptional Children Contract Service. This is an information item, and Stacy Huffman.
And as she comes forward, what she is going to do is similar to what we did last week with other academic service contracts that are now on your consent agenda. She will cover the detail of these contracts so that next month they will be on your consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Just waiting on clicker.
No clicker.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. Tonight, I would like to share information about the resources that we use to support our pre-K students, our academically and intellectually gifted students, as well as our students who receive ESA services. Currently, the Department for Exceptional Children receives funding from two sources. Those sources are federal and state funds. We use those funds to support well over 7,000 students. These supports are in addition to the resources that we shared with you last month. We use these funds primarily to fund all of our classrooms, from our pre-K classroom to our AIG classroom to our EC classrooms, as well as to support our specialized classrooms. We also use these funds to provide our related services for students who have that on their IP, for our interpreters, for additional support staff, as well as resources and supports that our students need to meet their individual One company that we contract with is AMN Healthcare. This provider provides our services for American Sign Language, as well as our occupational and physical therapists, as well as our speech-language pathologists, to ensure that our IPs are compliant and that our services are being met. For our students who require direct medical support for, to meet their health needs, or for students who require specific medical attention, we partner with Thrive, Bright Star, Bayada, and Continuum. They provide individual nurses for our students to ensure that they can access their education in a healthy and safe For students who have related services on their IPs, we utilize Cobb Pediatrics, Edu Healthcare, and Speech Center. These providers not only assist with recruiting, retaining, and vetting these highly qualified professionals, but they also provide professional development opportunities for our related service staff. Gaston County Schools has and will continue to hold IP meetings, both virtually and in person, depending on parental preference. DocuSign allows for a way to collect electronic signatures as a way for all stakeholders to show their participation in the meeting. Because we also utilize a digital platform to house all of our documentation relating to our IPs, using DocuSign helps us to expedite implementation of the IP as well as the IP Through partnership with the Department of Public Instruction, we receive residential day funds. These funds are used to assist our children who receive services in an approved residential facility. Gaston County Schools currently partners with Holy Angels for these services utilizing these funds. For our orientation and mobility services for our students who are blind or visually impaired, we currently utilize Envision Services. The services they provide include travel skills for safety as well as independence, helping students learn to utilize CANES or other electronic travel aids. They also work to evaluate students to identify those who may be eligible for services, as well as consulting with our school staff and our Melmark is a residential facility that provides both educational and clinical services for children and adults with autism spectrum disorder. Gaston County Schools currently has a student who receives services from this facility and needs to remain in this environment to ensure that his educational, behavioral, and social and emotional needs are met. National Padilla advocates that all learners focus on those critical thinking, communication, and attitudes to ensure that they can earn a living, become an active citizen, as well as pursue a meaningful life. They primarily focus on skills in reading, comprehension, critical thinking, as well as continuous improvement. Through partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, students age 14 through adult can receive vocational rehabilitation services. These services include our pre-employment transition, complete evaluation, connecting students to job coaching for placement, as well as agencies for supported employment. We work collaboratively with this agency to hold events such as our Employability Bowl and our Career Fair. They also provide financial support for clients who are eligible for those work-based needs. News2U is a learning tool for our students who follow the North Carolina Extended Content Standards. This tool allows our students to access all core content, as well as those social and emotional skills in alignment with those extended standards. For our face-to-face interpretation in sign language and other spoken languages, we currently contract with Pacific Interpreters. These interpreters are available on short notice in situations such as absences to either provide support for students in person or to facilitate interpretation in IP meetings to ensure that full parental participation. Gaston County Schools currently contracts with Public Consulting Group for case management of our 504s and our IPs. This platform allows us to maintain our accommodations, develop goals, and track student progress. It also assists with ease and report generation for state-required reporting, as well as repair information. Through that multi-tiered system of support, teachers are able to create plans, manage plans, and monitor plans. Through the early warning system, we have access to test scores, grades, as well as attendance, so that we can identify those students who are at risk, and more importantly, to develop a plan of support and to track their progress towards that plan. We also utilize PCG for our funds management. This includes our Medicaid reimbursement, our fee-for-service, our cost reporting, our risk pool, and our special state reserves. For our testing and assessment of students with disabilities, we currently contract with Riverside Educational Center. They ensure that we have testing measures in place that diet is collected so that, most importantly, we can develop a plan for student success. For our students with intensive behavioral needs or life skill needs who require individualized adult support, we contract with Support Incorporated for these services. Due to the increased demand of school psychologists, we currently contract with Winthrop University. These intern psychologists assist us with assessing students, with report writing, and conducting IP meetings as needed. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Sherry, you have a question?
I just have a couple of questions. Unbelievable how many agencies that work in cooperation with us. How often do these get adapted from your...? Because I know that they're yearly cooperative work with them. How often do we adapt, or are we pretty consistent from year to year with these same agencies? Because the scope of it is just, it's remarkable how much we're able to provide for our students.
Ms. Cherry, I think that's a great question. Winthrop University is a good example. Five years ago, we wouldn't have had Winthrop University as a partner with school psychologists because there's such a shortage across the country. And with the needs of our students, we have now partnered with them so that we can have first access to those school psychologists. They're interns for us. They help us with testing, and then hopefully we're able to hire them when they complete the program.
How, when do y'all have to start doing this process to make sure that it's locked in for the upcoming year? I mean, is this ongoing throughout the year?
Some of these contracts are multi-year contracts. Some of these agencies we've partnered with for years. For example, Support Incorporated, that we have been a partner with them for many years to help us with those additional supports that we need to make sure that students have the individual attention they need to be successful throughout the school day. Some are new partners. One of the things that we did last month and we're doing this month is we like to share everything that we provide for our students in the district with the board and with the public so that people can see how we're using funds. But we like to do those in the spring so that we can complete the contract process. So once summer starts, we can focus on teachers' professional development and students'.
Well, I'm glad that you showed us everything again because the scope of the things that we're able to offer our children is just amazing.
I will share, Ms. Cherry, to your question, that we are contracting probably more in this department than we have because there is a shortage in this area for an exceptional children's teacher, and also the other special skills and needs of the folks like interpreters and others that work in this department. things that we're able to offer our children is just amazing.
I will share, Ms. Cherry, to your question, that we are contracting probably more in this department than we have, because there is a shortage in this area for an exceptional children's teacher, and also the other special skills and needs of the folks like interpreters and others that work in this department. So we are contracting more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Anyone else? Ms. Guthrie?
I had asked about interpreters earlier, and I was happy to hear what you're doing and what your plans are to continue that. I want to say that you gave a very comprehensive report, and I appreciate hearing all of that. I want to ask one question. What do you have, if anything, during the summer for those children that really, truly need to have the services?
So, last year, due to the pandemic, we offered five camps for our exceptional learners. They were a huge success, so we will continue those camps this year. We have a camp for our students who are on the adapted curriculum, which is that North Carolina Extended Content Standard curriculum. We also have a sign language camp.
That's great.
We have a camp for the visually impaired. We have a camp for students who receive occupational therapy services. So we have very individualized camps, so that we can continue to meet those, needs of those students, and to build that momentum going into the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. Next item is the 2022-2023 Gaston County School Budget Request. Gary Hoskins, this is an action item also.
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I am here to present the Gaston County Schools Budget Request for the fiscal year 2020-2023. This process started at your board retreat back in January. In December, we surveyed our stakeholders to try to gain insight as to where they thought that we should be spending our funding. Over the months of February and March, we gathered data from our department heads, supervisors, executive directors, and then the superintendent's budget was developed and presented to this board at the last board meeting for information. If the board approves this budget request, we will be presenting this, or I guess delivering this to the county commissioners at our joint meeting tomorrow. At that point, we will await their approval of their budget. That typically happens in May. Then in June, we will have to approve a balanced budget, or we may be able to have the final budget resolution prior to our fiscal year-end, June 30th. So our budget request has two components. The first is the operating request, and the second is the capital request. In the operating request, we do have both internal and external factors that input or that impact our budget. The first being potential state budget changes. This is probably less of a risk this year, because we will be entering the second year of a biennial state budget, whereas the past three years, we did not have a state budget. However, you know, they could make changes to this if there's a big impact in local or state economic conditions, if inflation continues to increase or impact the state, and any changes in state or federal laws. Those could all impact the state budget. Also, student population trends. We are funded largely based on our student population, so as those trends move up and down, that will impact our funding. And also, the last couple of years, we've seen COVID-19 requirements, and the funding that we've received from COVID be a fairly large external factor as well. So we have received about $130 million in funding for COVID. This is over multiple allotments, over multiple periods of time. Most of this, or all of this, has come from either state or federal allotments. These allotments have different requirements. They have different use dates. Typically, they're three years, and the final funding will probably expire around September 2024. So we still have about $87 million left in that. These funds have been used for a number of purposes. Some of the purposes that we list here, the Chromebooks. We will talk about that in a little bit. We now have, every student has a Chromebook. Books, printed supplies, materials, that all came about really early in the pandemic. The Summer Learning Program, we really started that last summer. We'll have another big summer learning program this summer coming up. Of course, online learning materials. COVID bonuses, I think last November, this board approved, I think it was a $1,000 COVID retention bonus, and then a couple of months ago, you approved another $1,000 COVID retention bonus that will be paid in June. So all that is coming from this funding. We had additional teacher allotments at our elementary and middle schools. We had dedicated substitute teachers and air purifiers in all of our classrooms. So those are some of the items that we've been spending those funds on. We also have internal factors. The two biggest are the competitive nature of the compensation over the last year or so. That's really gone up. It's caused staffing shortages from our facilities departments, to teachers, to all throughout the organization, and really it's not just isolated to Gaston County Schools or the education industry. You can see that throughout the restaurant industry and other industries as well. Also, the Chromebook distribution, that is a big commitment for us to do, to give 29,000 students a Chromebook. Remote learning options and school facility improvements, we're always trying to monitor that and maintain those options and those improvements. So our current local funding is $51.5 million. That includes some teaching positions, some instructional support positions, a number of school administrators. A lot of our assistant principals are paid using these local funds. Our school choice and magnet programs, I think we went from six programs about three or four years ago to 21 programs now. That was due to local dollars. This board asked for that, I think, two or three years ago, and they've continued to fund that. Our school maintenance, our facilities department, those are largely locally paid positions. School safety, security, supplies, all of our utilities and insurance also come from local dollars. So our operating request has two components, our ongoing expenditures and our new initiatives. Ongoing expenditures are just what is it going to take to continue to maintain operations as we're running them right now? We have three items here totaling just over $1 million. The first item is our state-mandated increase in employer-paid benefits. We know with the second year of the biennial budget coming up, that our health insurance premiums that we pay as the employer are going up 5.4%. And the retirement portion of, the employer portion of retirement is going up 5.7%. So that's the $445,000. The replacing end-of-life mobile devices, as I mentioned earlier, that's one of the things we're using COVID money for. We have been in contact and communication with the county and let them know that this is, you know, this is funded by COVID right now, but I think in year three, this is going to be about a $2 million request that we're going to have of the county. And we do a three-year request when we ask funding of them, so they can sort of see what's coming down the road. And then, as always, we have an inflationary component to our existing expenses. We also have new initiatives. Those total about $1.7 million. Each year, we have asked for, and the county commissioners have been very generous in increasing our certified employee salary supplement. They've increased it over $4 million over the last seven or eight years. We're asking for another $500,000 this year. The county has taken the salary supplement from $2,229 eight years ago to about $3,246 last year. That's good improvement, but we're still, you know, continuing to lag behind some of the, some of our peer group, both locally and the same-size school districts. Also, again, with the state biennial budget, we know that classified and certified salaries will go up about 2.5%. In addition, our classified salaries will go up from a minimum of $13 an hour to $15 an hour. So that is, that will impact us as well. Student support personnel increase and custodial allotment increase, again, these are things that are funded by COVID right now. The student support personnel increase is putting a nurse in every school. So I think we only had, I don't know, 15 or 20 throughout our 54 schools. Now we have one in every school. And again, we've talked to the county about this, and that's going to be a program that we're going to want to continue after COVID goes away, and so we're just trying to communicate with the county, because we've got another two years of using our COVID money for this. And the same with custodians. We've increased both the number of custodians in our schools and some of our roving custodians, so that when somebody's out sick or on leave, we have somebody in the central office that we can move over there. The teacher leadership program, this is the TA-to-teacher program, where we'll be taking about 40 TAs, working with, I think it's Garner, Garner Webb in Belmont Abbey, to pay their tuition, so that they can move from a TA to a certified teacher. And in return, they will teach for Gaston County Schools for four years. Also, student retention program, this, we've got about three years' worth of paper documents, paper files for our students, that we plan to digitize over the next three years and make us more efficient, have more storage space. And then finally, adding an additional month of employment for our high school counselors and our athletic directors at our middle and high schools. So that total is $1.7 million. So our current county local funding is $51.5 million. Our request here is $54.2 million. So we're asking for about $2.7 million more this year than what we are currently receiving. In addition to the operating request, we have a capital outlay, and that's really mainly paying for our maintenance and repairs of capital items, such as HVAC, roofs, life safety equipment, et cetera. This is just a chart, this is from the Managing for Results in America's Great City Schools. So we are currently funded at 24 cents per square foot. We've got about 5.3 million square feet of space, and you can see we're at 24 cents 2019-2020. Other school districts that were in this survey, they ranged from an upper quartile of $1.52 per square foot to 91 cents per square foot. So you can see that we're well below even the lower quartile. So we will be asking for $6.3 million, and that is, that equates to $1.20 per square foot, which is where the median is for this group. And we'll be using those funds for technology, vehicles, general renovations, that's where we really need the funding, because we have aging schools. We have about 60% of our schools are 40 years old or older, and then furniture. And we believe that both the operating request, as well as the capital request, will support this board's vision, which is to inspire success in a lifetime of learning. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman? Happy to answer any questions?
Yes, anybody have any questions for Gary?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Hoskins, did the state, I know that they do an allotment per pupil. Due to COVID, do you think that they would increase the allotment per pupil because of the critical needs that a county may have now?
They have held us harmless for the last couple of years. I don't believe that they're going to hold us harmless this coming year. And when I say hold us harmless, you know, we had a higher student population pre-COVID. That student population statewide has declined, but the state has sort of held everybody harmless. So, you know, we were around 31,000 or so students. Now we're around 29,500 is where they're going to be funding us, or actually, they're going to be funding us now, about 30,000. I don't know that the per-pupil allotment is going to go up any more than the normal inflationary adjustment for per pupil. They are talking about expanding the cap for our DEC students, which is, I may get this wrong, but we're capped at like 13.5%, and we're really about 14%, 14.2%. So that anybody over 13.5% is not, you know, we're not funded for that. So that will be very helpful. And those per-pupil allotments have gone up, you know, a little bit more than inflation, but I don't see just the normal allotments going up more than normal.
And I know that principals usually get their allotments. Are they projected before the end of school, based on the student enrollment? If that be the case, then the site base or the school improvement teams could actually work, well, this is what I think, could actually work with the principal or principals within the summer to make some of those site-based decisions that need to be based on what that specific culture in that school could be?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and we, we try to get allotments out earlier, early. We're actually going to be putting them out the next couple of weeks. We have our projections from DPI, we have our own internal projections. We'll put those allotments out, and then as the new school year arrives or starts, we will make adjustments to those allotments, you know, up or down. You know, if the population's higher than what we expected, we'll add some allotments. If it's lower than we expected, we may have to move some allotments.
And one more thing, the gentleman said earlier about, and I'm just mentioning this, the number of students that actually come in late, the Chromebooks and online learning is so, is essential as well. And we appreciate the effort that you make with Dr. Slutsky, I think, to make certain that the databases are current, so that the assessments are made and the students are somewhat on track as far as grade level or achievement. So you're inclusive of what you're doing, and that has been a concern that I've had about learning loss and what may even happen, because we know some children were experienced learning loss even before COVID, so we can't blame everything on COVID.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I am happy to hear that your technology is just as current as the other learning resources or tools that we have to offer to our students, so we can be inclusive and meet the needs of every child. So thank you.
And Ms. Guthrie, you highlighted a critical element. You talked about the school improvement team and their role at each school, and how those resources are used, and principals working with the school improvement team.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Collier?
Oh, yeah, I thought you had a comment. We've moved the bar in the supplement in Gaston County. We have, I think, our commissioners for that, and that doesn't go unnoticed. However, the problem is, Mr. Hoskins has mentioned, is the other counties around us have done the same thing. While we have gone extra steps and actually moved the bar for once, our people we compete against have done the same thing. So that's one of the most important things, I think, we can do, is lobby to get our teachers paid with as much of a supplement as we can in this budget and moving forward, and set the expectation going forward to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Howell?
Mr. Hoskins, could you update us, this has nothing to do with the budget, but update us on the new payroll system? Have you got your hands wrapped around it yet, or?
Well, we're, we're working with both Oracle and Cherry Road. Cherry Road is the implementer, Oracle is the actual software. Oracle, or Cherry Road has been onsite probably for the last two and a half, three months. You know, when we started this process, this was before the pandemic hit, and so typically, you would have people onsite throughout the preparation to go live. Unfortunately, this was new to them and new to us. We did all this over the phone and over Zoom, so that, that posed some challenges. After, I guess, the January sort of Omicron died down. After, I guess, the January sort of Omicron died down, they all came in and started helping out. So, you know, we've been chipping away. We still have some issues, you know, with pay back in January, February. That's going to be our retro. That's going to be the next thing that we focus on. We were working to get the March, everybody's March payroll as accurate as we could. We made a lot of strides in that. The next step that we're working on, we're cleaning some stuff up this week, actually today, later this week. The next thing we're going to be working on is the state instructional support and teacher supplements that this board approved at the last meeting, trying to get those out. And then the next step will be going back and doing retro for January, February. The challenge with the retro in January, February is we wrote hundreds and hundreds of manual checks and those checks were not in the Oracle system. And so now we've got to, in order to make sure that people get paid properly, not shorted, not too much, is we've got to go back and look at those manual checks that were written, you know, from January through, we're still writing one or two, you know, now, and get that incorporated into Oracle so that we don't pay somebody twice because we've got to run it through Oracle in order to get it on somebody's W2. So that's our challenge with the January, February. I do believe we'll get those state salary supplements out this week. I think we're very close on that. But those are the next two big things we're working on. And that will clean up some double deductions that we had in January, February. We've been working on leave issues. I think a lot of that's been resolved. You know, one of the problems that we have is the leave may be accurate in Oracle, but when you look at your payslip, which is what everybody does, is not correct. And so we're trying to fix that. But that's sort of where we are at this point. Does that answer your question?
There's a lot of people depend on that, you know. There are a lot of them salaries not very in step as to where it should be. And do you need more help or bring in more experts to get this resolved? I mean...
Well, we've got, you know, we've got a number of people here from Oracle. As far as our payroll department goes, we're two down out of five. Out of, you know, we've got one retiring this month. We had one retired two months ago. So we're trying to fill those positions, but those obviously are brand-new people. It's just a complicated system, you know, to initially learn. I think once we, you know, are running it and living with it, it will, you know, certainly make some sense. We're on the last system for 30 years. So, you know, four months into SUNPAC, I don't know where we were, but we understand our, you know, our people are, you know, working hard. They're frustrated because they're used to, you know, helping people. When they, you know, contact them, they're used to helping them out and they just can't help them out right now. You almost have to get a programmer to fix some stuff. And it's challenging, but, you know, we're chipping away and making progress, but it's never, never as quick as what we would like.
Okay, this is an action item on our school budget request. Do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Moore makes a motion. Second, Mr. Hall. Any other discussions? If not, all in favor? Ms. Lovelace?
She might not be there. She had to go.
Oh, did she? Okay. She's not there. All right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
This brings us to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda tonight. Please take a look at those items listed and do I have a motion to approve those items? Ms. Cherry makes a motion. Second, Ms. Guthrie. All in favor? Ms. Lovelace? Okay, thank you. This brings us to our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Minister of Board. Mr. Hall, thank you for asking that question because that was the first item I wanted to talk about. Today, I probably spent an hour on the phone with the State Board Chair, Representative Torbett and his team. This is an issue that everyone in the state is aware of the pain that our employees are being put through and are not abandoning that. Everyone wishes they could wave a wand and fix the payroll issues. And so I get emails from employees and that's what I just share. I just read them to them and say, I want you to hear what we're dealing with so that no one else in the state has to fight through this that we're getting to fight through. So I appreciate the efforts that are going on in our payroll department and our finance department and our HR department trying to meet. And I apologize to each employee who has directly not felt they were communicated with. It's timely. It gets into that chicken and the egg. They're working very hard to solve problems and when they, the communication. And then I feel for Mr. Hoskins. He'll commit to a date and then it doesn't deliver because we're relying on third-party consultants. I know that I've had people warrant you in litigation. There are numerous meetings going on. There are people talking and all that posturing, but that wouldn't solve anything at this point. So we're trying to keep everybody at the table and working to resolve. But again, I appreciate you bringing that up. Gary mentioned something in his budget that is a great celebration for us. The Teacher Assistant-to-Teacher Program. We have targeted 40. We have over 80 qualified applicants and I think we're over 100 that we're still getting applicants and reviewing. But I know the 80 have already had some initial reviews that they'll be part of the interview process as we move forward. That's exciting because as our speakers pointed out, as we made as one of the challenges, finding enough people to help educate our children is a challenge across this country, but for sure in Gaston County. And so we're trying to utilize all resources for that. And so that's an exciting opportunity in our district. It is this week is our four-day week, which begins Friday, a spring break on Good Friday. And it will be the next week is the entire week off. And just noted that April 18th through 21 is annual leave days. And then Friday, April 22nd is an optional teacher workday. From an operation standpoint, the schools will be closed. Central Office will be here to support them, but the school buildings are closed. So questions can come here because we want to give people as much break as they can during that period. And on Monday, April 25th, when everybody comes back, it will be the six-week sprint to the conclusion. And that will include end-of-year activities, state testing. And speaking of state testing, I want to make sure that everyone heard there was a revision to our end-of-grade testing dates. We've moved math end-of-grade from Monday, May 23rd to Tuesday, May 24th. And our fifth and eighth grade science end-of-grade from Wednesday, May 25th to Thursday, May 26th. This was just in looking at the calendar, some feedback that we received. And so we've made those revisions and I believe the schools are communicating that out. But it will be an exciting six weeks with a lot of recognition and as well as culminating with our graduations on Saturday, June the 4th. Many of you attended our meeting last Monday night where the House Select Committee on Education System for North Carolina's Future met at Stanley Middle School. I appreciate that Representative Torbett, who chairs that committee and has great influence in the state on education budgets and education operation, wanted to come and hear about Gaston County Schools and show off his home school district. I really appreciate all the staff of Stanley and what they did, in particular, Dr. Rebecca Hustdler, who shared opening remarks and talking about what Stanley School and just the growth of that school throughout the last hundred years and that vital role it plays in our community. I want to remind you all that on Thursday afternoon, April 28th, at the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, we'll be having our Star Teacher/Student Awards Ceremony as well as our recognition for National Board Certified Teachers Reception. So those are two great events. And then, as was mentioned in our recognition earlier, our Evening of Excellence Ceremony is Thursday, May the 5th, at Gaston Country Club. And I want to thank Truist for continuing to be the sponsor of that event. It makes it be a very special event where we can really honor those who deserve to be honored. So please place that on your events. And I would also begin to encourage folks that kindergarten and pre-kindergarten registration is open and we excited. We were talking earlier about allotments. It helps us to a lot better when we know what our registration for those two look like for next year. So you don't have to wait till August. You can come and register now and it'll allow us for planning for that. Mr. Chair, there is a lot going on in the district and I appreciate what everyone is doing. You know, our lottery will conclude this week and we'll begin letting people know about their choice selections. So there's a lot of activity and I just appreciate everyone's commitment to making Gaston County work for the good. Tomorrow, we have our joint meeting with the commissioners to talk about budget. Mr. Hoskins has been working closely with Dr. Eagle's staff to make sure there's no surprises on what we're bringing and what they're expecting. And so we look forward to a productive meeting for that. We do need to have a closed session and I will tell the board upfront that we have several meaty items to discuss in closed session.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Booker, and thank you for all the time and attention as we have work to do the best for our students, teachers and community. We look forward to our next regular meeting, which is currently scheduled May 23rd, 2022. And we do have two school board members. Happy birthday, Brent Moore, April 4th, and Justin Davis, April 18th. Both of them turned 40 years old. So happy birthday. So I do need a motion to go into closed session. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, paragraph A6 for personnel and under the same statute, paragraph A3 for consultation with attorney.
Ms. Cherry, second. All in favor? Ms. Lovelace?
Yes.
That's unanimous. We're in closed session.
We're back in open session. Mr. Dedman?
I'd like to make a commission that we adjourn, sir.
All right. Second, Mr. Hall. Hall in favor?
Yes.
Miss Lovelace?
Yes.
Have a good evening.